I'd like to call this meeting to order for the City Council Meeting of October 20th, 2015. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Boyson?
Here.
Councilmember O'Rourke?
Here.
Councilmember Waterfield?
Here.
Councilmember Zuniga?
Here.
Madam Mayor, Patino?
Here. Our first item this evening is the Library Volunteer of the Month, and Councilmember Boyson will be making the presentation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This month, the Volunteer of the Month goes to Donna Coda. Donna is an active volunteer who has contributed thousands of hours promoting literacy and supporting library programs. As a member of Altrusa International of Santa Maria, Donna contributed to the fundraising efforts benefiting the library's Altrusa's Children's Theater. Since the new library's opening in 2008, Donna has continued to work on many library fundraisers and events that have benefited the library. In 2011, Donna spearheaded the Altrusa Committee, which created the PA- excuse me, the Painted Chair fundraiser. This event has become the top fundraiser for the Friends of the Santa Maria Public Library, and Donna continues to support the project each year. Early in 2015, Donna helped form the Santa Maria Public Library Foundation. She serves as a board member of the foundation, which supports library programs in all the city and county libraries operated by the Santa Maria Public Library. The foundation's current project is to raise funds establishing after-school homework centers in all the library service locations. Donna's commitment to the betterment of the community, and especially to the needs of children who seek free after-school homework help, is what motivates her to help the foundation's mission. Donna Coda is a quiet, behind-the-scenes worker who efficiently and effectively produces what is needed to advance the goals of the organizations she supports. She has proved herself to be a creative, dedicated, and energetic supporter of the Santa Maria Public Library and the community it serves. We are thankful and proud to designate Donna Coda as the Library Volunteer of the Month for the month of October. And I believe that our librarian, Mary Housel, would like to say a few words.
Donna, I just want to thank you so much for all your involvement with the library. I know you've been volunteering since before I started working here, but most recently I've kind of known you through your help on the foundation. And as a startup organization, it's been so wonderful to have all of your help with that, because I'll be on how hard it is to get this going. But you'll never forget all the work you put in on our first fundraiser, and you did the auction, and you made beautiful packaged items that were a big hit, and you brought in an extra, I think, $1,000 for us that night. So I just want to thank you so much, Donna. I'm so happy you're committed to helping the library. We appreciate it.
You forgot to put film on it, Diane, didn't you? There it goes.
I just want to say thank you very much to Mary and Jackie McNeil for all the help that they've given me, and it's truly an honor to be recognized. Thank you.
Dynamite, okay.
The next item this evening is a proclamation in recognition of National Friends of Libraries Week, and Councilmember O'Rourke will be making the presentation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and this is continuing the saga. This is a City of Santa Maria, San Maria, California proclamation. Whereas the Friends of the Library groups in Santa Maria, Guadalupe, Orchid, and Los Alamos raise money and enables our libraries to prove- to move from good to great, providing the resources for additional programming, much-needed equipment, support for children's summer reading, and special events throughout the year. And whereas the work of the Friends of the Library highlights on an ongoing basis the fact that our library is a cornerstone of the community, providing opportunities for all to engage in the joys of lifelong learning and connect with the thoughts and ideas of others from ages past to the present. And whereas the Friends of the Library understand the critical importance of well-funded libraries and advocate to ensure that our libraries get the resources it needs to provide a wide variety of services to all ages, including access to print and electronic materials, along with the expert assistance in research, readers advisory, and children's services. And whereas the Friends of the Library's gift of their time and commitment to the library sets an example for all in our- in how our volunteers- volunteers lead to positive civic engagement and betterment of our community. Now therefore, Alice M. Patino, Mayor of the City of San Maria, hereby recognizes October 18th through the 24th, 2015, as National Friends of the Library Weeks, and encourages everyone to support our local Friends of the Library by becoming a member and thanking them for all they do to make the library and community a better place. And this is witnessed, signed, sealed, and delivered tonight. And receiving this is Jenny Newell and Amelia Vegas. So come on down.
I wondered if we could also have Stephen Bedford come up from the Los Alamos Friends, and I don't think we have anyone from Orchid, but this way we'll have three of the four represented. Thank you, guys.
The Los Alamos Library has been open about a month, and I can't tell you how wonderful and you- we're already seeing great participation and to all parts of the community. And again, I want to just say thank Mary especially, and the staff of the library, who seems to spend a lot of time making sure that everything is just perfect. And also to the- to the council, without their support, you know, we wouldn't be able to have it opened. And, you know, it is really phenomenal to see all of the people and the community get behind something as wonderful as a- as a public library. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
And thank you for the recognition for our Friends group. Everybody works pretty hard, but it's for people like that, like my grandchildren that I brought tonight, because they're the future, and if we don't do something to increase literacy in our community and train our children to be great readers, great learners, we're not going to be the city we are today in the future. So thank you for everybody who supports the Friends, supports the library. I hope you all have a library card and a Friends membership.
Actually, the person who should be standing up here representing Fogel, Friends of the Guadalupe Library, is that woman sitting right there, Shirley Boydston, who is one of the founding members of the Friends. And the Friends has been around since 1999. I've been involved, I'm one of the ones with the least seniority, about two, three years, I think. And I had asked Mary, what should I say here? Should I sit there and just wave at people, or what should I do? And she said, just say whatever on your mind. So I'll be very brief. I understand the importance of libraries, born and raised in Guadalupe, spent many, many hours at the small library there. And even though the branch has expanded, I still consider it a small library. And we have been very fortunate with the Friends to be able to have grants approved, again, primarily because of Shirley out there, and donations from within our community and actually outside our community, which is really, really great to see, to provide resources to our small branch. So thanks for the recognition. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, yeah, my thanks and gratitude. We have such wonderful volunteers that lead these groups and-
And it's so neat tonight that we're recognizing not only our Volunteer of the Month, but also the Altrusa group that's here, because they're our huge library supporters. And then all of our Friends groups together, I don't know how that happened, but it all came together tonight to be the big library night. So I want to just thank everybody here, Altrusa Friends. We have Dick and Joyce Hall sitting back there, and thank you to them. They're longtime helpers with our Friends of the Library in Santa Maria. And Jackie McNeil, who's the president of our foundation, and Isa, our former CCLC director, and Laura Davidson in the back there. So thank you to everybody that helps with literacy. It's the key that makes our community grow and be better than it can be. So thank you.
And thank you, Mary Housel. Next, we have a proclamation in recognition of Make a Difference Day, and Councilmember Zuniga will be making the presentation.
Thank you, Mayor. Whereas the principle of compassion lies at the heart of all, calling us to always treat others as we wish to be treated, and whereas we acknowledge our role and responsibilities to make compassion a clear and dynamic force in the city through educational efforts and deliberate actions, and whereas it is also necessary in both public and private life to refrain consistently and empathetically from inflicting pain, to act or speak violently to anybody, and incite hatred, and whereas working together to embrace and apply compassionate solutions can break down boundaries and is essential to human relationships and is the path to enlightenment, now therefore Alice M. Patino, Mayor of the City of San Maria, hereby declares October 24th, 2015, as Make a Difference Day in the City of San Maria, and encourages all residents and businesses to make connections through the arts in the hope of enhancing compassion in our community. And accepting the proclamation this evening is Jo Lynn Lutz from One Heart.
I am past president for Altrusa International Central Coast, and I'm here to introduce Jo Lynn. And we also are here to invite you. This is Altrusa's second annual Make a Difference Day. It's going to be at the mall here across the street on Saturday, the 24th of October, from 11:30 to 2:00. And I will let Jo Lynn tell you the rest.
Yes, I am part of One Heart, but this is really Altrusa. What- this is a cool night. Did you put us on the same night? My Altrusa sisters there? This is really Altrusa's second annual Make a Difference Day event. It's a way to connect our city with community, to find ways through nonprofits. We have over 20-plus nonprofits joining us this year. It's pretty exciting. We have three entertaining groups. One Heart Studio Students will be singing. We've got Poetic Justice Project will be acting and having the audience participate. And then we've got some El Padrecido, he's out of Guadalupe, and he's got the cutest hip hop dancers you will ever see. So it's going to be very entertaining, give the nonprofits a chance to meet the community. And we've also gotten the schools involved. I just read a couple essays, and I do have faith in our- I was just telling Latisha, faith in our beloved little children. Literacy is extremely important. It helps children to grow up and make decisions on their own, well-thought-out decisions, and that's important nowadays. And so again, if you would like to join us and can make a little spot in your time this weekend, we'd love to see you. We look forward to you, Terri. Thank you all for doing what you do over and over. And I'd like to grace you with a children's CD for each of you, and one of my own, that I hope you'll enjoy. So, and then again, the Agents of Change. So, thank you.
Thank you.
The next order of business is the public- oh, I'm sorry. Our final proclamation this evening is the recognition of the 55th anniversary of Altrusa International of Santa Maria Incorporated, and Councilmember Waterfield will be making the presentation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Whereas Altrusa International of Santa Maria received its charter from Altrusa International on October 25th, 1960, and whereas the local chapter supports seniors through Project Senior Citizen, the Edwin Muscle Senior Center Program, the American Association of Retired Persons, and the Coordinating Council of the Santa Maria Valley, and whereas the local chapter supports youth through the Boys and Girls Club, Children's Theater, the School for Mentally Handicapped Children, Daycare Center Schools, and Bridge to the Nation, and whereas the local chapter also supports various nonprofit organizations in Santa Maria Valley, such as the Santa Maria Valley Humane Society, Salvation Army, Smooth Transportation, and the Santa Maria Valley YMCA. Whereas in June 2015, Altrusa International of Santa Maria Incorporated was a recipient of the inaugural Spirit of Santa Maria Award from the City of Santa Maria's All-American City. Now therefore, Alice M. Patino, Mayor of the City of Santa Maria, hereby recognize Sunday, October 25th, 2015, as the 55th anniversary of Altrusa International of Santa Maria Inc. in the City of Santa Maria, and invite residents to celebrate and commend the local chapters for 55 years of positive impact in the community. And to receive this proclamation is my friend Diane Almond Stevenson.
I'm not Diane. Could you show my friends? Yes, I will. Thank you. Thank you.
Your faces look familiar, I don't know why. Well, I was here a few weeks ago receiving an award on behalf of Altrusa, and I'm honored and humbled again to be here representing Altrusa on behalf of this wonderful group. I never dreamed when I was working at the Central Coast Literacy Council, and I used to write the proposals to get money for the council, that I would join, because I really didn't know much about them, except they gave us money. But because of Diane, I decided that, she was a neat lady, and then I should join a club. You have no idea how wonderful this club is. They keep you busy, and I like that. And I like what we do, because we care. What we do, we do from our hearts. And my only hope is that more and more people will join us, because it's such a joy to work for the community for free. It's such a rewarding experience, it has no price. And tonight, I want to tell you how proud I am to belong to this beautiful group, and I want to invite you to join us. We also accept men. We don't charge you more for the membership.
You should.
So please, if you have any questions, you can always ask the mayor, she knows about us. She has a lot of information, right?
Right.
So anyway, thank you so very much, and we will continue to do our best to help our community, because we do it with love. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, my gosh. Thank you, Isa. The next order of business is the public comment session. Madam Clerk, could you please read the criteria for public comment portion of the agenda?
This time is reserved to accept comments from the public on consent agenda items, closed-session items, or matters not otherwise scheduled on this agenda. Unless otherwise directed by the mayor, speakers will have three minutes to comment. Direction to staff may be given, however, state law does not allow action to be taken by the City Council on matters not printed on the agenda this evening. Once the public comment period commences, no other speakers will be allowed to submit a request-to-speak form.
Madam Clerk, do we have any speakers for this evening?
Madam Mayor, we have three.
Three. Okay. No other request-to-speak forms, we accepted at this time. And I have three. I have Jeannie Sparks, Virginia Souza, and Sylvia Gonzalez. So, Jeannie?
Hello, I'm Jeannie Sparks, and I'm here representing Santa Barbara County Action Network. I was actually hoping to go after Virginia Souza, because she's going to present- she's going to talk about an event that we just did, BC Familia, or Bike Day, at Adam School and at Buena Vista Park.
If you- Jeannie, if you'd like, we can switch it around.
Okay, that sounds really good.
Okay.
Oh, thank you.
Good evening.
Honorable Mayor, good evening, and City Council people. I want to thank you all for what you do for the city. I know it's time-consuming, and we're all very grateful that you care so much about your city, just as we do. I'm here tonight representing Buena Vista Beautifiers. My name is Virginia Souza, and I'm coming after having presented to the Parks Commission on the 13th of October, which is the protocol, so we give an update to the Parks Commission, and then we're coming here for three minutes. I've given you each a packet, and you can see our progress. We were formed- Buena Vista Beautifiers was formed in November of 2013 to maintain and enhance the Buena Vista qualities of the park while honoring and respecting the historical features of the park. Our activities in 2014 consisted of sponsoring events where we could survey the neighbors. And we did about 95 surveys of persons at those events. We had numerous partners, and we are still collecting actively diverse members for the committee. And you will- you have a list of committee members at the back of the packet as well. So thank you to Jack Boyson and Terri Zuniga, who have been committee members from the beginning, and very dedicated and encouraging. 2015 was the implementation year, so we did some implementation to the campfire cabin, and you'll see that listed there. Santa Maria High School installed some fencing, and we had numerous partners and collaborators during the year. And you can see our vision for 2016, which is expanded due to some outreach from other organizations to our committee. I'd like to focus tonight on the next sheet, which is, there are the six areas of focus that we determined we would- six areas we would focus on in park improvement, and it ends up being neighborhood improvement. Item number 21 under transportation is, Buena Vista Beautifiers would like to ask the City Council and Santa Maria Bonita School District to be champions of safe biking and walking to schools, and institute specific programs with measurable goals. And what led to that is our BC Familia Day that Jeannie wants to talk to you about. Jeannie took wonderful photos, and I'm not as technological, so I just gave you a sampling of the day's activities through photos. And we had over 40 volunteers, so I love the volunteerism in the room today at your meeting. And we had volunteers from all kinds of organizations, and they're listed in the photo directory. Six students learned to ride the bike for the first time. Two of them were in the upper grades. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much, Ms. Souza. Okay, Jeannie Sparks.
Hello, Jeannie Sparks. With us you can. Thank you, Mayor and Councilmembers. Just wanted to add a couple of things to what Virginia said about Bike Day. It was really a wonderful event. There were 87 children who registered to ride their bikes, to participate in the program. It was bicycle safety training, so it was not just learning how to ride a bike, but how you're supposed to ride on the right-hand side of the street, and you've got to stop at the stop sign, and what to do when you come to an intersection. And there's other vehicles, which in this case was other bicycles laid on a really cool thing laid out by Santa Barbara Bike on their playground, blacktop. And so they had a three-way stop, and they had to figure out who stopped first and who got to go next. And that was- it was pretty confusing at first, but after a while, they got it. And so it was a really good learning event, and it would be great to see that in other schools. But I really wanted to say something besides what Virginia was saying, it's because Virginia's been the leader of this group. She brought everyone together, and she's there every month to encourage you to come to the next meeting and come and support the event, and I think she needs a lot of recognition and deserves a lot of credit for that, because she really is the firehouse behind it. And I also wanted to just bring attention to Buena Vista Park, because it is the city's oldest park, and it may not look that great, and some people are thinking, you know, it's not the most wonderful park in the world, because there's issues over there. But this, of course, there's issues everywhere. But we went there this weekend, and we just saw so many great things going on. There were kids playing on the little kids' playground. There were people using all four of those basketball courts, and that was probably the most-used item, because there were several people in each basketball court. There were even- there was a little girl on a skateboard, and another one on roller skates, and another section skating around. And then there was, you know, people sitting in the park, people enjoying the picnic areas. There was a lot going on there. And now the Parks Department is planning to renovate that park, so we're really all behind that. We'd love to see some changes and some improvements, and we hope to become more involved in that process of that happening, because there's so much more that could be added there. But we really want you to notice and have the people of the city notice what great things are already happening there, and then to make the enhancements to make it even better. And thank everybody for their efforts, especially the Parks Department, the Parks Commission, and what they're doing. And I have to say for Virginia, because she doesn't sing her own song, but she's great.
Thank you, Ms. Sparks. Ms. Gonzalez?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. I've come today as a private citizen. Friday was my last day as Coastal Community Builders. I'm happy to announce that I'm moving to San Diego to take a job with the prestigious architecture and planning firm, and I wanted to have the opportunity to say thank you to Madam Mayor and members of the City Council, that we worked together on some of the projects for the past probably 10 years. Express my appreciation to the staff, also at the city, that have been so professional and just so helpful all along. I'm going to name Peter Gilly, Brian Halverson, Bill Scott in planning and development. David Beas and Hallie Holden are the group of people that have worked legally in the last couple of years while I was at CCB, just the utmost professional and helpful and just conscientious and thorough people. I mean, fantastic professionals. Mr. Pell has brought the planning department just one notch above, one level above, has really raised the bar, and has really brought just the quality, the integrity, just the professionalism that, you know, that every department should have. And I just wanted to say thank you.
Well, thank you. Yeah.
Thank you, and I wish you the best of luck in San Diego. I know you're going to do great, because you've done great here.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Moving on to the consent calendar. Madam Clerk, could you please read item number three?
Mr. Hayden? Thank you, Madam Mayor. Members of the City Council, if I could just take a brief moment, wanted to introduce Mr. Chad Springer, our Director of Utilities. As customary, the second council meeting of each month, Mr. Springer will be giving the public a recap as to our water conservation efforts in the City of Santa Maria. So, Mr. Springer?
Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers, very briefly, I'll go over where we're at with water conservation for the month of September, which was the last month that we have final readings on. So, as you can see, our goal was the red bar for conservation. We conserved as much as the blue bar, which is good news. We're still conserving water. The black line indicates our total conservation date, which as long as it's above the yellow line is a good thing for the community of Santa Maria. So we can see that our conservation has dropped off a little bit. Our state mandated target for conservation is 16% in the month of September. This indicates a 15% conservation. So we are a little bit under the target, so I would encourage anyone who is watching the council on TV to continue to conserve water. As you can see on this bar, the October, which we're currently in, is still a fairly high water use month for the community of Santa Maria, primarily because when we're not in a drought, this is usually kind of our dry, warm time of year. So with that, here's the relatively simple showing. He's still smirking, so it's a happy water drop. While we are at 15% for this month, with the blue line, the blue in the water drop above the indicated line for September, that indicates that overall our cumulative savings are still in excess of what the state has targeted for the city.
I don't know. That water line is hitting the bottom of his brow, so.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. O'Rourke?
Well, I just- I had- one of my golfing buddies made a comment to me that he saw water flowing in the river at the Sway Crossing. And I made that comment, and Chad, you might relate, as others may not have known, that we have had water in the river-
Mr. Ohrak?
Well, I just, I had, one of my golfing buddies made a comment to me that he saw water flowing in the river at the Sway Crossing. And I made that comment, and Chad, you might relate, as others may not have known, that we have had water in the river this week.
Honorable Mayor, Councilman Ohrak, the thunderstorms that we could all see building over the mountains to the east of us didn't provide really any sort of precipitation here in the valley. However, upper portions of the watershed did get significant rainfall in quick accumulation about, accumulation rates estimated at about three inches per hour. So, that caused significant runoff. And I think the first time we noticed water running in the Santa Maria River near the east part of Main Street, out near the landfill, was Friday. Came in through Guadalupe and noticed that there was still water running in the Santa Maria River down at Highway One as of yesterday morning. So, that's good news for the groundwater basin here in Santa Maria as that's a significant area for recharge for us. So, we're hopeful of more rain to come.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Moving on, anything else, Mr. Hayden? Okay. Moving on to the consent calendar. Madam Clerk, could you please read item number three?
Routine items are presented for city council approval without discussion as a single agenda item in order to expedite the meeting. The consent calendar is approved by roll call vote with one motion. These items are discussed only on the request of council members.
Do any council members have items they wish to pull for discussion?
Madam Mayor, I do. Item number C, I need to read this out.
Okay. Okay.
Madam Mayor, if there are no other requests, I would move for the approval of consent calendar with the exception of item.
I'll second that.
There's been a motion to approve the consent calendar with the exception of item C and a second. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Boyson?
Hi.
Councilmember Ohrak?
Hi.
Councilmember Zuniga?
Aye.
Councilmember Waterfield?
Aye.
Madam Mayor, Patino?
Aye.
And I'll move for the adoption of consent calendar, item C.
And I'll second that.
I have a motion to approve consent, item number C, with a second. Any further discussion? If not, Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Ohrak?
Hi.
Councilmember Boyson?
Hi.
Councilmember Waterfield?
Aye.
Councilmember Zuniga?
Aye.
Madam Mayor, Patino?
Aye.
Okay. The next sort of business is a public hearing. Madam Clerk, could you please read the title?
The city council will consider recommendations of the Planning Commission regarding the review of zoning text amendments to Chapter 12-34 freeway tower signs of Title 12 of the Muniz Book Code and a zoning map amendment for Julius Carstens to place a freeway tower sign overlay district on 24.3 acres near the Highway 101 and Highway 135 interchange.
And the staff report is to be made by Planning Division Manager, Mr. Gilli.
Madam Mayor, Patino, and members of the city council, tonight we are reviewing an amendment to the freeway tower regulations of the city. Currently, the city has two towers that are up. One is at the crossroads at Betaravia and 101, and the other one is at the Gateway Business Plaza near Broadway and 101. And the aerial on the screen shows the property that the Gateway Business Plaza Tower is on. And the way our ordinances operate, only businesses on this property are able to put a sign on that tower. For other parts of the city and shopping centers, there's a good reason for that. You don't want to have a shopping center that advertises a business that's a few miles away. It could lead to confusion. But when you look at a freeway tower, it's reasonable to expect that it is advertising a greater area than just the property it's on. The challenge what is that properties along the freeway may vary in size, in shape, and in use. So, staff was not really able to come up with a way of defining a radius around the tower or X number of parcels. Instead, staff proposed to the commission the concept of establishing an overlay for each proposed or existing tower that would go on the zoning map and any business in that overlay would then be able to locate on that tower. The proposed overlay for North Broadway would include all of the hotels and the farm supply on Broadway, as well as the vacant property on Presker and Broadway that currently has a development application for some retail and another hotel. By establishing this overlay, we are basically redefining what is considered onsite for that particular tower sign. This went to the Planning Commission at a study session in July and to a public hearing in mid-September, and the commission recommended approval of the ordinance on a 5-0 vote. The applicant was at those meetings and indicated support for the proposed ordinance, and he is present at this meeting if the council has any questions. If the council adopts this ordinance, staff will prepare freeway tower overlays for the crossroads shopping centers so that they have an overlay established as well. And they'll be brought up to this ordinance amendment. But the first step is approving the ordinance and this first overlay and the package before you would do that. And staff's available if you have any questions.
Any questions, Mr. Gilli? I have a question. What about those businesses that are in that center part there, they're not, wouldn't be considered in the overlay?
Madam Patino, members of the council, are you talking about properties south of the overlay or inside?
Yes. South of, like, south of the Holiday Inn?
Well, so, the area I'm basically outlining in the red pointer?
Yeah. Not, yeah, right, that, where the pointer is, that area in there.
That area wasn't chosen because they don't have any direct visibility off the freeway or off Broadway. So, it was felt that it would be confusing to someone trying to get to it. However, it, the overlay is how it will end up, the overlay is what the Planning Commission and council want to define it as. Another point is that when we look at the hotels on this list and some of the stores and future development, there might not be any signage space left on the tower. But if an owner wants to come in and ask to be added to that particular overlay, it can be done.
Because I know a few years ago, an owner in that area there had asked about that because of our ordinance not being reasonable enough there in there and they, no one from the highway or from Broadway can even see them. And nobody came to the Planning Commission to discuss that?
Madam Patino, members of the council, nobody other than the applicant came to the Planning Commission meeting. We did notify all the properties within the overlay. We gave them a special letter saying that we're proposing to put you in this overlay. We then also did notice everyone within 300 feet. So, they did, a notice was provided. But as I said, if it changes over time and a business wants to be added to this overlay, it can be amended.
Okay. Ms. Waterfield?
Yes. Mr. Gilli, I have a question in regards to your presentation. You said you indicated that you wanted to keep it within that vicinity and not a few miles away. But in actuality, from the Broadway to Donovan is one mile, I believe. So, within the city limits inside on Broadway, you might want to open it up to those businesses. And I understand the signage shortage on the tower that you're talking about. I'm looking at the Walmart sign and it shows six signs up there with space for more businesses to go in. But they are putting in a Starbucks right there next to the Broadway. And a Starbucks is a draw into the city of Santa Maria. So, I would, I would think that we would want to put signage up there to draw people into the city of Santa Maria. And they may discover that not only do they want a Starbucks, but they might want other things in that area as well. So, limiting it to just that portion of it, you might want to reconsider maybe going up through Donovan or just within one mile.
Madam Patino, members of the council, there is, based on discussions with the applicant and trying to guess the number of tenants interested and such, this outline was arrived upon, but there's, each overlay can be a case-by-case and it does not have to end. I believe this is, the dot is on the Viarta. So, it's, it's a couple streets from Donovan, but it can be extended. It does not have to end at this boundary.
So, we can look at it on a case-by-case basis? If Starbucks says, hey, I want to go up there, we can relook at that and see that?
Yes.
It's not a closed and shut door?
It can be amended in the future at any time.
Okay.
Is it going to cost the applicant anything to amend it?
The, the rezoning would, there would be costs associated with it. There would be an application fee and then having to go in the hearing process. So, if there's a belief that the outline isn't enough already, then it might be beneficial to not act on it now, study a larger area, and then not have to worry about it being amended as quickly. It may also be something that you can ask the applicant about what extent he believes there will be interest in being on the sign. And as I said, the applicant is present.
Madam Mayor?
Okay. Ms. Zuniga?
Okay. I appreciate Councilmember Waterfield's comments about certainly we would like to have something like Starbucks. But if you move it a block up, and you, I mean, if we're just looking at this one, if you move it a block up, now you're in the Food Max and the Viarta Shopping Center. The Food Max has 10 stores, at least 10 shops in there. Viarta has another six or seven over there now, well, maybe five over there now because they have the donut shop and, I mean, the sandwich shop and some other stuff. You're not going to have enough room for everybody. Of course, that would be assuming everybody want to be on it. But I think, I appreciate the opportunity to have this, like, start out as something small and then, you know, possibly have it come back to us if in fact there is a lot of interest from other, you know, retailers close by. But this, to me, feels like a good starting place.
Any other questions, Mr. Gilli? Okay.
I guess I would just, if I could.
Oh, go ahead, Mr. Boyson.
Madam Mayor, I would, I guess, just echo Councilmember Zuniga's comments on this. I think we're actually stretching it a little bit as it is to go all the way down to Taylor Street down there. And I think the idea is, you know, let's see how this works and if it is successful. The last thing we want to do is be advertising something that somebody's driving all over town and says, what the heck is this all about? It could have a negative impact on us as well. So, I, you know, and as I understand it, this is the applicant's request. Is that right?
Madam Patino, members of the council, this is, this is a, an area that was, ended up being agreed upon, but the applicant originally didn't request necessarily an overlay. It evolved into an overlay. So, the applicant may have comments about, about an extension or modification.
Sure.
I just don't want to cause the applicant more money later down the road.
Okay.
And Madam Patino brings up a very good point.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, do we have any written communications?
Madam Mayor, we have received no written communications on this item.
Okay. I'd like to open up the public hearing and hear from anyone in favor of the ordinance, followed by those opposed.
Can you hear me, ma'am? I have one request to speak.
Okay. I don't, is this in favor or opposed? In favor, okay. Because I want to hear from those in favor. Go ahead, Ms. Sparks.
Hello, I'm Jeannie Sparks. Thank you, Mayor and councilpersons. I came to speak on this topic because it's a really, it's one I've always liked since Bill Orndorff introduced the idea of making Santa Maria the city of towers. And we're always looking for an identity that other people can identify us with easily, and towers seem to be a good idea. So, we do have a couple of towers and then we have a couple little short things that pretend to be towers at all the freeway exits. Those are supposed to, those are called towers, but they're really short, but they do put pictures out on there. And I think those are really nice, too. So, I think it's great that we can continue this tradition of doing towers. I'd like to see possibly a little bit more on the towers from the city, like Welcome to Santa Maria or City of Peace or City of Towers. So, maybe some of those spots could be reserved for the city themselves. And I understand that there can be up to 10 towers along the freeway. And I think it'd be a good idea to have them. But I'd like to see a little bit, to go a little bit farther and make them more exciting so they're not just billboards or advertisements, because I think advertisements are important and get to go to the businesses. But make them so you can go up there, go up in the towers and look around, like you can in the clock tower in Santa Barbara. And look at the thousands of people that go to visit that. How many people would come just to go up in a tower and take a look around? Or maybe they wouldn't necessarily come just because of that, but if they knew it was there, then they're going to stop and they're going to visit the businesses that are there. Plus, they get to have this great view of the valley. So, it would attract tourists and it would be something nice for the residents, too, because we have a beautiful valley, but it's really hard to see from the ground. We don't have, the hills are way out there and it's pretty flat here. So, let's, let us get up there so we can take pictures. So, I also want to encourage you to take the tower concept a little bit farther and to do a tower in the center of town, too, maybe at Main and Broadway or some other place that you're trying to enhance, right here, the civic center. But let's make it the tallest building that's in its area so you can go up above everything, you can take a look at the beautiful valley, take your pictures. And I think it would help to enhance our image for everyone here and everyone around. So, I hope that you'll consider expanding it. And I think it's a great idea. I like to, I like what you're doing and those, and let's just, let's take it farther and let's just do what Bill Orndorff was trying to do back in the early 2000s.
Thank you, Jeannie. Is the applicant here? Okay.
Hi, I'm Julius Carstens. I live at 8200 San Diego Road, Tascadero. Pardon me?
You need to speak, we can't hear you. You need to speak into the.
You're too tall for our mic. Okay. Is that, is that better? That's better, yeah. Okay. I've been working with the Planning Commission now for, gosh, I don't know, maybe a year and a half, two years? It's been a while. Two years, okay. And I really liked your questions because the planning staff has worked through this really well. I came at them with some of the things that you guys have actually brought up. And I'm actually happier with their design because I think this is a more, it's a cleaner approach and it's more fair to the drivers and people that are going to see the sign tower. I think you get lost once you start going too far away from the location. And I think the way they've set it up like this allows it to be flexible enough, yeah, there could be zoning, you know, fees and all that kind of stuff. But if you have a tenant who really wants on the tower, I think you can get, you know, they'll cough up the money for that part. So, I'm very happy with how we've come to this conclusion so far. That's how I feel about it.
Okay, thank you. Any opposed? I don't see anything. Okay, I'd like to close the public hearing and bring this back to the council for discussion or a motion.
Madam Mayor?
Ms. Waterfield?
I would like to move that we accept the votes.
Number 2015-12 to be introduced for the first reading and continued to the next meeting for adoption, amending the Title 12 of the Santa Maria Municipal Code regulating freeway tower signs.
I'll second. It's been moved and I second to approve ordinance number 2015-12. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Waterfield?
Yes.
Councilmember Zuniga?
Yes.
Councilmember Boyson?
Hi.
Councilmember Ohrak?
Hi.
Madam Mayor, Patino?
Aye.
The next item is a public hearing regarding recreation and parks programs and services fee increase, which is being continued to the November 17 council meeting. Comments on this item will be accepted during the public hearing on that date. Okay, next up is a regular business item. Madam Clerk, could you please read the title?
The city council will consider authorizing the application for a Caltrans Sustainable Transportation Grant to create the downtown multimodal streetscape plan.
The staff report is to be made by Planning Division Manager, Mr. Gilli.
Madam Patino and members of the city council, we are currently in the process of updating our downtown plan. And we have actually, at the Planning Commission tomorrow, they will be having a public hearing on the downtown plan. And if we remain on schedule, it could be in front of you on the 17th of November. A major implementation measure of the plan is to improve the streetscape, particularly on Main and Broadway in the downtown. In our conversations with Caltrans staff, we were encouraged to apply for a Sustainable Transportation Planning Grant. We learned the state has a total We learned the state has a total of just under $10 million for local jurisdictions to develop detailed plans for creating, for turning auto-oriented highways into more of a walkable type of community, which works very well with downtown. Our streetscape ideas that are being looked at in the 2015 update of the plan, as well as the original 2008 version, are basically what this grant is there for. The deadline for applying for the grant is October 30. So it's right around the corner. That's why we're bringing this forward ahead of actually the adoption of the future plan. We are asking for council authorization to apply for the grant. Our matching funds, which is outlined in the staff report, would be taken out of Measure A funds and would be roughly about $34,000. The grant would be roughly $265,000 for a total of about $300. If we receive the grant, we will hire a consultant to do the work, but community and business outreach would be a major component of the process. The streetscape plan will look at a wide range of options on Broadway and Main. Initially, everything will be on the table and up for discussion. Funding will be a key component of the plan, not only how do we fund doing the improvements, but also how are we going to fund maintaining the more specialized improvements over the long term. But the first step is to authorize us to apply for the grant, and that is what we are here for tonight. And I'm available if you have any questions.
Okay. Madam Clerk, do we have any requests to speak?
Madam Mayor, we have one.
Okay. Ken Huff. Good evening, Mr. Huff.
Good evening, Congress General. Councilmember Ken Huff of the Santa Barbara County Action Network. Strongly encourage you to do the recommended action. Don't wait until we have the specific plan all done. There's a lot of agreement on it already, and I think you should go for this grant, and we offer whatever we could do to help. We can write a letter, we can do more. And we'd love to be participants in whatever the public process is that goes forward to define the improvements. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Huff. Any questions of the council?
I have one.
Mr. Ohrak?
Peter, I see the timeframe is really quickly approaching. Are you within that timeframe to be able to put a grant together? Okay, are you been working on it, I should say? Okay, thank you.
Mr. Boyson?
Mr. Gilly, of course, I'm fully supportive of this, as I'm very supportive of our ideas on the new downtown specific plan. But before we get our hopes up, how competitive is this grant application? It would look like there's maybe 20 grants that are going to be available.
Mayor Patino, members of the city council, the, there was a lot of study done to make the grant application as attractive as possible. Some of our demographics make us a more attractive selection. Also, the reason we aren't asking for the max is being done specifically to make it a more attractive application. We've communicated with other cities in the region and with Caltrans about how they applied for a similar grant. It's changed names over the years, but it's been the same type of grant and got, you know, tips on how to make our application more competitive. So we are optimistic, but we won't know until April.
We don't want to ask for the whole enchilada, then.
Exactly.
Dang.
Did you have any, Ms. Waterfield?
I just feel that no matter how competitive it is, we should go forward, because we do have a great opportunity here, and we have to grasp everything that we possibly can. And I like competition.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to, you know, commend the staff for their progress to date on this, and certainly for seeking out the input and support of Caltrans for this project. And I know you've discussed with them some of our ideas moving forward, and they've been supporting, supportive of that as well. And I just think it's a lot of forethought, because it's important relationship building, and certainly, I think, our grant will be competitive, given that we've already reached out to them and had input from them. I think that's going to help us in the process. So that was really awesome. I want to, you know, really commend you guys for that. Additionally, I think it's critical that we get it right, so that this is a grant to hire a consultant. In terms of the planning, we want to get it right out of the box, right? We don't want to start it and then realize, you know, a year into it that this isn't really where we want to go, so that it's clear and give the public opportunity to have input. So I think that's really great as well. And I think that this is one of the most important components of the downtown specific plan, is the streetscape is really going to make the difference for how the whole process moves in the future. So I think it's critical that we get it right, and that we're starting off this in the beginning, because I think it is the most critical component. So, good job.
Any other comments from council? I just, I think it's very important. I think if we're going to do anything with the downtown, I think the city has to make the first move. And I don't have any problems with the asking for the whole $500,000, but whatever you think is going to work, I'm not going to tell you what to do, whatever you think is going to work, ask for it all. Like Sister Janet says. Get a footnote on there from Sister Janet. Okay. So I'll bring this back to the council?
Can I make a motion to adopt resolution number 2015-91 to be adopted approving the application for the Caltrans Sustainable Transportation Planning Grant for the fiscal year 2015-16 for the downtown multimodal streetscape plan?
I'll second. Resolution number 2015-91 has been moved, and second, any further discussion? Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Ohrak?
Aye.
Councilmember Zuniga?
Aye.
Councilmember Waterfield?
Aye.
Councilmember Boyson?
Aye.
Madam Mayor, Patino?
Aye. That's hard to say, that downtown multimodal, multimodal streetscape. The next item will be the report by the city manager, Mr. Hayden.
Thank you, Mayor Patino, members of the city council. Your next city council meeting will be on November 3. We have a number of consent agenda items. We'll be doing the second reading of the ordinance that we passed this evening on the freeway interchange tower sign. We will also be having two consent agenda items. One, the emergency facility use with the county of Santa Barbara, and a ward of agreement for utility relocation services. We'll have three regular business items. The first one will be our first quarter financial report. We will also be bringing forward for your consideration a pedestrian improvement plan for Marion Medical Center. And then also, we'll be having a first reading of an ordinance dealing with park hours and city facility closure times. So that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Hayden. The next item is oral reports of council members. Ms. Zuniga, why don't we start with you? Oh, you want, okay, Mr. Boyson, we'll start with you.
No required reporting. Thank you.
Well, my wife reminded me that sometimes I just say I've left my list at home, so she forced me to bring my list. And so, if we've got about an hour, just, number one on the 7th was the police headquarters dedication, which was absolutely fantastic. And I just commend the chief and everybody. It was pretty spectacular, and the number of people that were there were just odd. And that night, I went to the police council social, and that was very nice, and they raised a lot of money for our police department that sometimes we don't have the resources to give. On the 12th, or the 10th, went to Special Olympics out at Hagerman Field. And as usual, our recreation parks department, Alex, you guys do a phenomenal job, held soccer and softball. And then over at Manami Center, they had tennis and volleyball, I believe it was. So the kids were bonkers. It was a very warm day, but everything went well, and the Kiwanis did the barbecuing for all the athletes. On the 12th, I attended the Community Development Block Grant Committee's community hearing to hear the people that came in to talk about the needs, a lot of ordinary citizens, I'll say, as well as the nonprofits, really exfoliating the needs of the communities now with the times they are, and the hunger and the homeless issues that we face, and drugs and kids and all the other good things, too. I had a chance on the 12th also to meet with Ed Carcary from General Media, and we discussed the downtown specific plan. On the 13th, the chief and his group at fire station number five were on the telly with KSBY, I'm sorry, and they were kicking off the season of hope. And that's a few blocks away, so I jammed and took some canned goods and raced down there. And I was the first one to throw canned goods in the container. So I'll just say, and unfortunately, I didn't have anything other than my golf clubs to put in the toys, but they're used, and I don't think they'd want those. So anyway, I encourage anybody with new unwrapped toys and/or canned goods, because it is a season, and I think all of our fire stations are collecting goods as they have in the past. On the 14th, attended with, well, Terry maybe talked about, Terry Zuniga and Alice, the Elks, Santa Maria Valley Chamber of Commerce Business Appreciation Day with a lot of companies that have done a lot of things for the community and to further education. Gave out, is it 12 computers, I believe, that day?
Wow.
Boy, amazing. And then on the 17th was the Stand Down, Steve Lavenino, Supervisor Lavenino's famous fourth edition of the Stand Down. And if you haven't gone to help, it's amazing how many people go there. And I'll just relate, in the restroom there, there was an airman from Vandenberg that was escorting a veteran, and they were in there, and the vet said, you know, I really appreciate this. This was not what I had expected. And the soldier said, do you remember what you said when we first met at the gate? And it was, and he apologized, because he was rather obnoxious, and I didn't need this, and I don't see what I'm going to benefit from this. But it's totally phenomenal, and the Elks did a great job of barbecuing, doing a breakfast in the barbecue. I just, all the accolades to Steve and his group to do that. Then I, on the 18th, I went to our ex-mayor Lavenino's 80th birthday party. And then, again, I met with Peter Lopez the other day, talked about downtown specific plan, and then Mike Neuhauser today cornered me about what's this all about. So people are noticing we're doing something about downtown specific plan. Thank you.
Ms. Waterfield?
October 3, I attended the Latino Leaders Conference at Allen Hancock College. Great group of people out there. Also attended the Grapes and Grains. October 5, Enus Ranch briefing by Rick Sweet and Nick Tompkins, which was a very, very good meeting. October 6, I met with Police Chief Ralph Martin for a PD update, and that was really good. Also met with a gentleman, Michael, from Tom Martinez Architects and the owner of a new Mediterranean restaurant regarding a new Mediterranean concept here in Santa Maria. October 7, I attended the Treatment Court. Also attended both events for the Santa Maria dedication of the PD, and later that evening, the Santa Maria Police Council Social. October 12, attended the city transportation meeting. October 14 was COLAB, and October 16 was CADA, which is the Council on Alcohol and Drugs. Is that correct? Yeah. In regards to the teen community, very, very good meeting. I met, I don't know what day it was, but I met with Mr. Peter Gilly and Neta regarding the ranch's Enus, and that was a very, very good meeting. And also attended Stand Down, which was absolutely awesome. And then last night, I was a guest speaker for Domestic Violence Solution, and that was a first time for me to ever say what I had to say. And it was excellent.
Ms. Zuniga?
Thanks, Mayor. I appreciate you letting me go last, although I went to, we've all been to the same things. I went to, of course, the dedication of the Santa Maria Police Department, and awesome job, chief. That was a really nice day, and I really appreciated all the comments that the sheriff from Los Angeles made. It was really, I really appreciated that. And of course, the barbecue by retired firefighter Dennis Chapansky and his crew was awesome. It was really good. Met with Councilmember Boyson and Supervisor Lavenino with Chuck Cove and Kathleen Sullivan from Marion regarding a possible mental health facility here in Santa Maria, and the possible relocation of the Aegis site over on Thessler. And then attended the opening ceremony, the Special Olympics out at Hagerman Field, which was just awesome, seeing all of the athletes and the coaches out there. I think I high-fived all of them, so it was fun. And again, Alex and his staff just do a great job. Attended Farm Worker Forum. Supervisors Carbahal and Farr came up, and we had over 150 farmworkers present. They're looking at creating a farmworker bill of rights, so that was really, really interesting. Several of them shared stories and a real education. And then I also attended the Santa Maria Valley Industry Educational Council's Business Appreciation Luncheon. It was so much fun to see all those kids get their computers. They were really excited. And I think that's cosponsored by the chamber. So that was, it's a really great demonstration of partnerships between schools, business, industry, and our community. So that was a feel-good luncheon. That's it for me, Mayor. Thank you.
Let's see. Wednesday, the 7th, I attended the opening ceremonies for the new police department. And my accolades for everyone that did everything, it was, I asked Lieutenant, oh, I think Lieutenant Dunn was in charge of the food, and I go, well, that was simple, because you just turned it over to Dennis Chapansky, and he took care of everything. And he said, that's right. He said, I just got on my radio. Management skills. Attended the 60th Substance Abuse Treatment Court event. And that evening, attended the Santa Maria Police Council event. On Thursday, the 8th, I attended the Fighting Back Santa Maria Valley meeting. On Tuesday, the 13th, interviewed KXFM radio station regarding the Empty Bulls event this Thursday, right? Okay, this Thursday at 11:30.
Next Thursday.
Next Thursday, yeah, next Thursday.
Next Thursday? Oh, I'd probably be showing up. Yeah, I'd probably be showing up this Thursday. Met with Mr. Maglenti regarding an upcoming restaurant that has that Mediterranean theme. Attended the Santa Maria Valley Chamber of Commerce 2015 Business Appreciation Luncheon, where they gave away the computers to these excited kids. Attended the COLAB event at the Fair Park that evening. Thursday, the 15th, I went down to Santa Barbara and attended the SBKAG monthly board meeting and the APCD meeting that afternoon. Saturday, the 17th, attended the Veterans Stand Down event at the local Fair Park, and that afternoon, the Filipino barbecue. Sunday, I spoke at the annual Eric's Run in Orchid and shot off the starting gun. Was, yesterday, I was on the Ben Hayes Show talking about the upcoming Empty Bulls event. This morning, again, on the Ben Hayes Show, talking about our meeting this evening. And went to the welcome of the Santa Maria Valley Chamber of Commerce Job Fair and provided opening remarks. There are over 90 employers there, which is like three times what they had last year. And by the time I left, there was all kinds of people looking for jobs, so that, it was a good event. At first, I didn't think many people were going to show up, but it started it to, and they just started coming through the door.
It's a big one, it's a no recount.
It is.
Jobs are happening.
The city council will now recess to a closed session. Madam Clerk, could you please read the title of the closed session item?
Conference with legal counsel anticipated litigation. Significant exposure to litigation pursuant to subdivision B of Government Code Section 54956.91, potential case.
Ladies and gentlemen, that concludes tonight's council meeting. Good night.